Seven o'clock, so we're gonna get this meeting called to order.
You're not chair yet, though.
Pardon?
You're not chair yet.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, alright.
So he jumped it down here a little bit, but that's good. Meeting's ordered, and our first item of business is the lack of chairman, so we do have a motion.
I nominate Dean Osterman.
Do you have a motion for Dean?
For Dean, yeah.
Any other nominations? Okay, we'll go ahead and close nominations. Halt and favors for Dean to be chairman, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, you're up.
I see my luck's still holding. Okay, well, I need an assistant in case some reason I go down. So we need nominations for a vice chair. Do I hear anything?
I nominate Bejo.
Anybody else wanna make a run at this? Okay, we'll close the nominations. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, another unanimous winner. Okay, very good. So let's go ahead and we're gonna start. Andy?
Good evening, Mr. Chair, good evening, Budget Committee members. Once again, thank you very much for spending your valuable time with us as part of this very critical and important civic activity. I think having the Budget Committee for a variety of reasons, as you're gonna hear really throughout this evening, served this role each year is incredibly valuable. I think there's a uniqueness to this year, since it's the first year of a two-year biennial cycle, it's always an interesting opportunity. This year, I think you're going to find out that there are other unique elements to this, to the information that is as current as really as today, related to what we're asking of you as volunteers in our community. So I appreciate your time, your effort, and of course, want this to be as interactive of an opportunity as you can, as I can, and for you to ask as many questions as possible of me, of Steve, of any principals that you're going to hear present this evening. Again, thank you in advance for this, your important task. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, thanks, Andy. Steve, you wanna review for all of us our duties and responsibilities, please?
We do have to reference, and I know many of you may already have this, but we have the Budget Committee handbook, and we also may have some extras for those in the audience that may not have seen one, but we're not gonna read through the whole thing, I just have a few points to go over real quick. First of all, thank you all for serving the students, staff, and patrons of the Silverfall School District. You all play a crucial role in helping our district maintain fiscal sustainability and to ensure that the budget will serve to meet the priorities and goals of the district as set by the Board. The Budget Committee is charged with holding one or more meetings to, first of all, receive the budget message and the budget document, which actually will be done, the budget message at the next meeting, to provide members of the public an opportunity to ask questions about and comment upon the budget document, three, approve the budget document as submitted by the budget officer or as revised and prepared by the Budget Committee. The committee approval includes a recommended level of spending and also specifies the property tax amount or rate for all funds in the approved budget. The Budget Committee does not change staffing levels, salary schedules, or negotiate salary contracts. It is not the committee's role to adjust policies or priorities set by the Board or to add, delete, increase, or decrease programs. However, the School Board Budget Committee does test the reasonableness of the budgeted line items to meet the priorities and goals of the district as set by the Board and take input from the public on the level of services planned. Once the proposed budget is approved, the Budget Committee's duties cease. The hearing on the budget document is held by the Board. The document presented at the hearing is the budget as approved by the committee. The Board must adopt the approved budget no later than June 30th of each year as per state law.
Okay. Any questions, anybody? Okay, Steve, also, you wanna discuss for everyone here the allocation system?
You bet. Behind the allocations tab in your notebook, it's got a few tabs in there, you'll see the 2017-18 school allocation page, which is the basis by which all of the principals will be presenting their school budgets on tonight, so it represents the allocation that they've received in this proposed budget for you to consider. Andy will be talking next more about the basis of the budget and how it relates to where the legislature's at and that sort of thing, and we'll get more into that and answer your questions on that in the next segment, but specifically to the mechanics of the school allocation page, the format has not changed at all from last year, so you'll see every school listed and their last three years of enrollment as it fell on October 1st of each year. The one important reminder on this enrollment is that for schools with kindergarten, the students still in these columns count as a half. We are, we do have full-day kindergarten, of course, but because we're still in a transition for this three-year comparison, we put the full-day kindergarten allocation at the bottom there in the third column to the right on the bottom. Next year, we'll be able to transition and count the kindergarteners as a whole for the enrollment comparison purpose, but we do a three-year average for the enrollment so as not to harm any particular school for a declining enrollment environment, but also not to reward too quickly a school maybe that's maybe growing a little faster, it's a blended deal, so you don't get helped quite as much if you're growing, but you don't get hurt if you're declining, you get a little time to make that up, and that's what the state does with the state school funding formula. The state will fund based on your higher year, your current year or the previous year, depending on which is higher, they give you the benefit of the doubt if you're in a declining enrollment district, which fortunately Silverfall's has not been in that situation for quite some time, we're a stable, slightly growing district, but it doesn't mean that every school is in that situation, each school is a little different, so that seems to be the fair way to handle that. So you can see that all the schools are represented here, of course, the charter schools are not in this particular allocation sheet, they're handled differently, but our average October 1st, well, our enrollment on 10/1/2016 with kindergarteners counted as half was 3545, rounded up, and there's 211 kindergarteners, so if you add the extra half kindergarten number, an extra 105, we're at about 3,650 students in our schools. The average is 3,500, or with the extra kindergarten weights, about 3,605 over the three years. So again, you can see that our numbers have increased the last couple of years and what the average is there. There hasn't been any change to the weighting, there is a small school extra weight for some of our schools, and the pregnant and parenting, and so it's a high school because the state does that in their formula, so you can see that there's a total weighted enrollment, and then a funding factor that's based on what type of school it is, which hasn't changed from previous years, and the last column at the top, you can see that what each school's weighted enrollment is, so what their funding will be based on. So if you take that number for each school and multiply it by $5,500, which is in the box in the first column on the left, that's the basis for each school's allocation. For comparative purposes, last year's allocation for the schools was $5,400, so in this proposed budget, we've increased the allocation for the schools by $100 to $5,500. Then there's some additional allocation monies that can be available to the schools. The 2015-16 carryover estimate to actual is a reconciliation tool from the end of the previous year, so once we close the books at the end of June, in this case, June 30th 2016, the discretionary portion of each school's budget is reconciled, and if they had some leftover, they're able to carry that forward to the next year. And the next column over, estimated 2016-17 carryover, each principal estimates based on this current year's budget and operation what they think might be available for them at the end of this year as carryover that they can use in the building of their 17-18 budget. So that's what that column represents. The next column is their each school's fixed admin cost allocation, which pays for their principal or principals and secretary time, and obviously, it's a little different at each school depending on their size, and then the full-day kinder allocation that we talked about earlier, and finally, in the second-to-last column, you can see exactly what the each school's budget will be based on there. So for example, Butte Creek, $2,126, $2,126,958. So you can see the total allocation out to all the schools is just north of $24 million, so it's about $400,000 or $500,000. Well, the base allocation was about $300,000 or $400,000 more than last year, and the total allocation is about $900,000 more than last year, comparing the second-to-last column there, so. Any questions on the allocation model?
So is it based on the no cuts, the second category then?
Our basis for revenue for this proposed budget is based on the far-left column, the governor's budget of $8.02 billion. One of the problems we have this year that I've never seen before in my K-12 career is that the co-chairs, legislative co-chairs' budget came in below the governor's budget, it's usually the opposite of that. So the budget that the legislature is currently working on is based on the co-chairs, which is what they have to do, and that was at $7.8 billion. Usually, it's the other way around, and Andy's gonna talk more about that as well.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
Thank you.
Andy?
So I can extend some of the topics that Steve referred to, and all of you received a letter from me, a couple of letters from me actually, with hopefully some introductory information to the current state of affairs, and I say this with some hesitancy, and hopefully you got the tenor within the letters that I sent you, but it, school funding can be almost predictably frustrating, school budgeting can be frustrating, it can be uncertain simply because of the uncertain nature of where it is, and Steve alluded to this somewhat, and that is the estimating reality of school budgeting. By the time, or from the point that we begin to make estimates about what our funding levels will be, even literally, in this case, two months before the legislature may even tell us, we have to make some assumptions. Once we get that information, we rely upon it for budgeting purposes, and frankly, for operational purposes, but as we go through the course of the next couple of fiscal years, there are actually adjustments made to our budget based upon the actual income tax revenue that's received by the state of Oregon, and so those estimates, excuse me, those actuals come in, and while if the economy stays pretty good, we find that we are not in a negative situation, but in some cases, depending upon how the economy turns, whether it continues positive or turns to the negative, it could be potentially up to three years before final reconciliation of actual dollars occurs. And so as you listen to the budget information tonight, and as we move to the next meeting, when you hear the budget message, keep that in mind, that we are at the very beginning of what essentially is up to a three-year financial process to support, adjust, and fund our schools, from an income tax perspective. So with that said, we have been operating on, and you've received these budget proposals based upon the governor's proposed budget of $8.02 billion for K-12 funding for schools in the state of Oregon. The information that I shared with you earlier, I believe, included a chart that showed the current service level, funding level would be around $8.4 billion. If we were to achieve that, there would be no question about being able to maintain current services, current positions, current funding level, even with a slight increase in enrollment, like Steve suggested that, or said that we are experiencing. With that said, there is some real realization to landing somewhere between $7.8 billion and $8.0 billion for the actual legislative-approved funding level, and that's information as recent as today and yesterday. You may have read some information on Oregon Live, or the Oregonian, or Statesman Journal earlier this week about that specifically, that there's a certain level of, I think, confidence by some people that that's where the funding level is going to land, and that's a true concern, and I'll sit here as your superintendent and say, I'm very concerned about it. Now, with that concern, though, comes very quickly a statement of support for what the Silverfall School Board has done over the course of the last year or two, and that is understanding that there it was going to be an impact based upon anticipated PERS rate increases, which has now occurred for this district that was a hit of just under $1 million. And so the increase in funding level for schools, while you'll hear and you'll see and hear plenty of people talking about this, saying, well, it's much more than the $7.4 billion that we have received in the current biennium, that's a fact, and unfortunately, it doesn't take into account the reality of the PERS increase and honestly, doesn't take into the fact some other cost of living adjustments that haven't been, and from my perspective anyway, seriously considered. So with all that said, I think the Board has done a pretty good job of providing you as a budget committee and this community some reserves available to do everything possible to absorb this hit as well as possible for at least this year, possibly the next two years. With that said, you're going to hear budget presentations tonight from principals that who are experiencing some reductions. You're gonna hear some, a couple of shift in priorities based upon needs of buildings, you're going to hear some adjustments to budgets based upon input from those within their school communities, and frankly, the reality is, the money is just incredibly tight. You received a one-page summary from me tonight that the Board agreed to in their February work session, which I fully support, and those are the goals related to budgeting this year. If any of you recall from last year, you'll note that these goals are very, very similar to what we experienced in the 2016-17 budget development, and that is to maintain the 2016-17 class size averages for our schools as we can, again, with site-specific decisions that occur with increases and decreases in enrollment, some shifts in staffing and priorities for some schools that can surely change, but that is a priority for the Board. School and program allocations, which maintain current levels of staffing, and again, doing everything we can to do that. Budgeted ending fund balance minimum of 6% of general fund revenue. You're going to hear from Steve and from me that while this budget uses quite a large proportion of the revenue that we need in order to maintain current staffing level, it does maintain this 6% of general fund revenue, in fact, it's slightly higher than that, about 7.9%, which is the same level that you were last year. So I'm gonna pause right there and say that while it may be an easy decision to say, well, Andy, we just need to put more money through the formula and give more money to schools so they can provide the support and staffing that they need, that's fine, and the Board, the Budget Committee can even recommend that, the Board can approve that, but I'm gonna say with caution right now is there are still multiple unknowns related to where we're going to go, or not just the next two months, but the next multiple months, and those include, I'll check my list out here, first of all, the level of funding, because if the legislative-approved budget does come in at $7.8 billion, that's an automatic $600,000 additional hit for this school district. I'd like to think we can absorb that, but I don't know, and have already shared with the principals that their current allocation to their schools is what I believe to be the worst-case scenario, simply because I didn't believe we'd drop between below $8.015. There's a reality that we may. We don't know what the legislature is going to do about Measure 98. Measure 98 is a huge chunk of change, anticipated in the $500, $600, $700 million range for the state of Oregon, and there has been talk, the legislative level, about Measure 98, which by the way, is the school dropout initiative, increased graduation rate, CTE emphasis initiative that was approved by the voters in November, which essentially places about $900 per high school student in the hands of schools to be able to achieve those three goals. It's very possible that a third, maybe a half, maybe two-thirds, based on conversations today of Measure 98 will actually be funded, and there may even be some legislative activities saying, that's how we're gonna get you to $8.01 or $0.02 funding level, but then that's targeted revenue, and we can't use that for funding a kindergarten teacher or a sixth-grade teacher. There are also unknowns about enrollment increase, and I think that's a fair statement to make. We have seen slightly increase in enrollment, but lots of discussion in this community about the increase in residential construction that we've seen, we've got a huge apartment complex going in over by Wilco, there's plans for potentially another one up the road here in James Street, lots of activity down in Southwater, and so again, the Board, I think, has done a good job of trying to stay ahead of that curve by completing a demographic study, an enrollment study, which began just about a week ago, and we anticipate will be completed by the middle of June or late June, which will give us some very good information about where we expect the enrollment to change over the next few years. That doesn't solve the immediate here and now, and it's not uncommon for schools like us, in fact, a couple of them are beginning to experience it, where we see slight upticks in enrollment for no apparent reason at all. It's interesting to note that Dustin Haney is not here tonight, but he would comment to you that the number of kindergarten students in Central Howell attendance area is the highest it has been in the last 10 to 15 years. We experienced something similar in the Victor Point area just a few years ago, and continue today, which is a little peculiar when most of the development is occurring in the city of Silverton. So that's what we're trying to sort out, and the Board is trying to sort out. There is some, there are some unknowns around collective bargaining, where it just began bargaining with both associations, Classified and Licensed Association, we don't know quite where that's going on, and we just received information from earlier this week about potential Title I funding levels for our schools, when you have an improved economy, decreasing poverty level in your school district, which we do, we have decreased poverty level, you also get a decrease in the federal support for reading and math supplemental education, and we don't know what that level is going to drop to, but it's very likely going to drop in this school district. So as a response, we have to say, how do we deal with that? How do we best work with that? So I'm gonna go back now to the 7.9% budgeted ending fund balance for next year. I stand by that, however, the unknowns make me very nervous for another few months before I would recommend to the Budget Committee or the Board that you make that any lower than what it is right now. I think that's about all I have to say. At this point, I'm sure and certain I'll chime in with other things as we move ahead. Anyway, there's some information for you, we'd be glad to answer any questions about legislative priorities and funding priorities.
Any questions, folks? Thank you, Andy.
You're welcome.
Okay, next thing on the agenda is going over for the public comment tonight. Just, is there, is there gonna be any public comment tonight? I got a lot of principals. Anybody plan on speaking tonight?
And any change their mind, too, even?
No, yeah, that's right.
Oh, they do?
They do.
Okay, alright, well, pardon?
We have one.
No, that's, yeah, so I'm gonna go over, I think, for these sheets out there, the public comment sheets?
Yes.
Okay, so anyway, more or less the bottom half of that applies to somebody who wants to speak tonight. The Silverfall School District Budget Committee has established the following guidelines to accommodate public comment. Number one, obtain recognition from the chair before speaking, give the testimony from the designated place, that's the hot seat, and are we having those folks sign in like they do?
I believe we have a sign-in, yeah.
Okay. Keep your comments, please concise, and avoid repetition. Be specific about what you want the Budget Committee to do. You are encouraged to provide each Budget Committee member with written copies of your testimony. In order to accommodate all who want to speak, please limit your comments from three to five minutes. If there was a group appearing at the same time with the same topic, we would ask them to designate speaker to represent the group, and then, last thing, the Budget Committee will normally delay actions to a future meeting in order to allow time for study and research on anything presented. So there's all the rules. We're gonna get going now with the principals. Is there any change in this order that we have, that I got? Okay. Nancy?
So we were able to maintain our current level of staffing, which was very nice, because having teachers up in front of students is how we facilitate the learning. We did have a few changes, but there wasn't a ton of changes. One of the things that we found this year was we went through more paper than we had planned for last year, so we had to up several of the line items that have to do with those kinds of supplies. So you'll see in the general classroom instruction, we upped that just a little bit. Our computer software got more expensive because we had more students, so I had to up that number, and then we added the sixth-grade supply lines. We were finding, we were struggling this year to figure out what was coming from sixth grade and what was coming from seventh and eighth grade, so to better facilitate the budget then for future years, we decided to create a separate line item for that, just to help us figure out the goalers. There aren't really too many other changes, we did have to drop some of the funding, but maintain equity with the departments, but that was just a small amount, so they were all given that same. If you go to the second page, we are funding robotics again, we had two teams this year, it was fantastic. You'll see a decrease in the number there. What we did was we moved a stipend for the coach to the activities and extracurriculars so it fit the line item more correctly. Again, coach is an athletic director, that's personnel, those all are going up this year, so we upped that amount. And then we also created another line item for our leadership class, they do a lot for the community, so we thought that would be a better way to track the spending of our leadership class for things like new student care packages and things like that. Again, just a little bit less in each of those sections, and then we upped the amount for the printing and binding copy of costs out of the office of the principal. Other than that, things are pretty much the same. When we went through this, our goal was to keep the same number of staff, and we were able to do that. We did get several Chromebook carts this year with what we had to spend, so what I did was put just enough money in that for one Chromebook cart and enough Chromebooks to fill it, and then in the carryover for the year after, I put in enough there for a Chromebook cart and enough Chromebooks to fill it, just in case the second half of the biennium didn't look as good as the first, so we at least have that in there so that we can continue to build to get to that one-to-one tech and student. So are there any questions?
I have a couple. So on page one, did the clerical assistant convert to a secretary, basically?
Yes, she was having to do things that were more in line with secretary, so it was a fair thing to go ahead and bump her to that.
Okay. Yeah, that made a difference.
Yeah, it did.
Yeah. And the Golden Key trips, they don't do those anymore?
So this year, we did one Golden Key trip, and so what we did instead was we just kind of lumped the field trips altogether. One of the things that our teachers are really good at are signing grants to pay for their field trips, and so we've been able actually to decrease that amount, so put it other places. I don't think we've paid for a single science field trip yet in the last three years, so.
That's great. And I wanted to ask how you felt the buildings worked out and kind of an overview?
It's been a definite learning experience. I think we're starting to get a handle on it now, so.
That's good.
You're welcome to come visit anytime, I'll take you around.
I came to the open house, it was fun to have the kids show us around and meet teachers and see what they've done with. and see what they've done with their rooms.
Thank you. Next, Kirsten, Scotts Mills.
Thank you. As you can see, we also have worked hard to try to stay status quo in staffing, keeping where we were. And one major change that is there is our point two music is no longer funded, and that was not an easy decision, but as Andy mentioned, with Title I funding and our need for some intervention specialists, we need to, that's something that we need to be funding. So, it was point two, so we're hoping that we can use that money, that funding, and push on some interventions. That's something that we definitely need. We are funding physical for PE at point eight, which is what we have now, though it's paid for with a grant. So, not knowing what's going to happen if there's going to be a grant, or what we have really discovered with PE every day for every student is so impactful. Kids' behaviors improve teachers. It's great for kids to get some of that extra energy out in those structured activities. So, that's, so we just feel like that's really important to continue funding. Our fingers are crossed that a grant does come out, and then we can get the grant again and then bring some of the other things back. But right now, funding PE at point eight.
Kirsten, what would you bring back? You did hit the theme there.
Oh, we have a list. So, definitely using interventions, like we talked about with Title I, not knowing what Title I is. We have right now a point three Title I teacher, and we're barely able to fund that, and we've discovered that it's not enough time. We have lots of students needing more extra supports, and so, ways that we can either bring in intervention specialists with math and reading. Title I is, she just focuses on reading. We also need math support. So, interventions, technology, we did put a lot of funding in technology. We were one-to-one until we had about seven new students in the last three months. So, we have quite a few one-to-one devices, and so, didn't put a lot of focus on technology because we have, we are, no, we don't have enough, there's never enough, but we do have plenty right now, but we're working on how we can share them more and use them some, you know, not all teachers are using them all the time. So, interventions, music, Ed assistant support, our class sizes, as you can see, you know, our twenty-nine, thirty-one, thirty-four kids, you need Ed assistants in the classroom. So, focusing, funding there as well. As you'll notice, we had at the bottom the media assistant. We had, one of our Ed assistants was funded two hours media assistant, so kids would go to the library and check out books, and we just need that body in classrooms, helping in the classroom, supporting teachers. We have great teachers that do a great job with thirty-eight kids, you know, in their classroom, but if you're able to put that Ed, this assistant support in there to help is, makes thirty-eight not seem like.
Sure. Well, when I was there, I was amazed how well managed it was.
Yeah, she does a great job, and it doesn't feel, yeah, totally gets real hot. But, but yeah, no, so really focusing on ways we can help, you know, get decreased student class size is important, but, you know, providing educational supports and intervention opportunities for kids and teachers is important.
Thanks.
Do some of your teachers teach music in their classrooms?
Um, we were actually talking about that, because we were like, what's the, the Christmas room? Or the holiday?
That's my group.
Yeah, exactly, and we do have some, teach staff members who are talented in music, none of them are offering to teach it in our classroom, but we have, I know we have a great parent-teacher club, and so, talking to them about helping to fund musicians and residents. We also have, there's lots of grants for those types of things, to keep arts in the schools. So, we're looking at grants, and we have a couple of community members who have approached me in the past and said, oh, we'd love to come teach this to the kids or whatnot. And so, reaching out to people, and we have a very supportive community, so hopefully we can include, continue with music in some way, we just not every week, probably, so. I think as far as, you know, in the, in the line items below, there, we moved some funds, so we were funding, we had five hundred in field trips, and that doesn't mean we're not going to have field trips, but again, like Nancy said, there's grants, the teachers do a great job of getting grants. Our DTC does a great job of supporting field trips, and so, that funding, I moved to guidance. We don't have a counselor, and sometimes you need a counselor. Central Howell has a Chris Ferguson out there, and sometimes we'll put her on a time card to come out and help us with different things. So, just some funding there to help with guidance is, so, help us purchase, help, you know, supply and whatnot for Chris when she's helping support us. I don't think there's anything else. You will note the secretary hours changed, I'm not increasing her hours, because she's already eight hours a day, I don't know if she would like that. But Judy definitely used to be funded partially with homeless funds, and that switched late last year, when it went from me to Mark Hannan. So, the district helped us cover that last year, and then now, this is all covered by Scotts Mills. So, that's that change, we're not increasing her hours, so. And then, one, I need to note, too, in the bottom, you'll see that we have fifteen thousand reserved for next year. We had thirteen last year, and we thought, oh, that's going to be awesome. Well, it was gone in about November. So, that's there, just to kind of depending on what happens with a lot of things, and just to have that, you know, you get musician, musician and residence or whatnot, we have some funding there to help support those things, so. Any questions?
Thank you, Kirsten.
You too.
A quick remark. Yeah, I just want to say, one of the other unknowns, Andy talked about, about most of them, is the PE requirement, and we talked at some board meetings prior to this, but there was, intended to be a requirement starting next year for PE in the schools because of the tight budget situation, it looks like they're going to push that off two years. I don't know if they've made the official decision.
There's a bill in the pipeline, too, at least, two thousand and twenty-two.
So, with that, four of our schools, as you know, have received grants, Victor Point, Boot Creek, Scotts Mills, Mark Twain Elementary, the last, at least, two years, maybe three now. And the state pays for PE teachers' salary, and the district has covered the benefit piece, and it's worked out pretty well. So, the schools have been trying to set aside money to pay out of their own general fund budget coming for this year. Every school's in a little bit different situation, and so, because of that, as well as the uncertainty, as they started to build this in February and March, each school looks a little bit different in terms of how they handled it, and part of that was also a function of just timing and when they were getting this done. So, when you looked at Kirsten's sheet, when you look at their school profile, it doesn't show a physical education teacher in there for this year, and then it shows the point eight zero for next year, which they have the teacher this year, it's just it wasn't funded out of their budget, it was, it was grant dollars, so that's kind of how that's reflected. But then, when we get to Greg's presentation for Mark Twain, or for Victor Point, I think it shows one and one. Well, again, for Victor Point, it was funded by the grant, but we showed it there for the, so, so there's a little inconsistencies between those four schools as far as how we're, how it's being shown.
Part of the reason for that, I don't think they got funding until like August or something, it's very late.
Yeah, it, yeah, when we were doing the budget last year, or I think it might have been the year before, actually, especially during, it was the last legislative session, we didn't even know until September if they were going to have it, so. And that's going to happen again. If they, they're not going to require the PE, most likely, it's possible the grants still could be available, maybe, we don't know, and if they are, will our schools, four schools still be in the running? We don't know. So, you know, this is another one of those items that's going to be, you know, four or five months out there potentially, and I mean, if it comes, you know, that's great, but we're planning on trying to cover ourselves, and there might also be a scenario where, you know, maybe in the first year, we try to, you know, kind of do what the state did, where, you know, the school pays for the salary part and the district, but then we kind of kick that around, too, so that could help Scotts Mills in that particular situation, too. So, anyway, so I just wanted to provide some clarity on that.
Okay, thanks, Steve.
I'm Leslie Roach, I'm the principal of Robert Frost Elementary. So, our budget is very similar to last year, but we have a few changes, just to, just for priority shifting, we really are working at our school to meet our district goals, and to, and with that, we're partnering with Mark Twain Elementary to increase our reading minutes. We're going up to ninety minutes of reading instruction during the school day next year, and because of that, we are reducing music slightly, so instead of two days a week of music, we're doing one day a week of music, and then we are adding an enrichment time of band inquire. That actually maintains our current staff level. The part of music that's going our way was a temporary person this year who is not interested in returning. So, that works just well for the, for the building and for our students. We know that our staff is, finds that music and guidance are very important, as do our parents, through surveys that we've done, and so, we want to maintain that in a way while we're still making sure that our kids are reading at grade level when they leave Robert Frost.
So, I'm a little bit confused, you said you're taking some music away, but you're adding enrichment, can you explain that a little bit?
He currently, we have fifth grade band inquire with Mr. Duffy, and so, he's going to continue that, but we had two music teachers this year, one at the point three level and one at the point three three level, and one is not returning next year, so, and one is.
And you're maintaining the other one?
We're maintaining, yes. So, I'm stringing it out, okay. So, so one of them is continuing in what we've been doing, and so, it's, we are very fortunate that we are able to offer guidance and music and PE to all of our students every week, and still shift our priorities to focus on reading instruction. So, one of the other changes you'll see is that our educational assistant hours did shift up so that we can have smaller group instruction during the school day, and our media assistant position is decreasing slightly, also to help with getting adults in the classroom, which is our priority. So, those are the few, only few changes that are happening at Robert Frost. Any questions about those three items?
So, on page two, the opposite of the principal services, your supply amount went to half, was it just five thousand, was way more than you needed?
Um, we were, as we were implementing PBIS, we spent, put more money in the office of the principal to implement, to purchase items that we might need, and we ended up not spending as much as we thought we would, so we shifted that back to general supplies.
And you don't plan on having a reserve for next year?
We do not plan on having a reserve for next year. We, we are planning on spending a little bit at the end of this year to get ready for next year, with some curriculum purchases.
Any other question?
Thank you.
You're off the hook, thank you. Greg?
All right. So, very similar to Leslie, in fact, we, we meet regularly and have kind of infamally taken on the, you know, kind of the charge of being one school in two buildings. We kind of have that unique configuration now, where we're, where we work together, we have K through two, and she has the next, the next grade level. So, a lot of what she said holds true at Mark Twain. We are really taking a look at the goals and the requirements for meeting those goals that the district has set, reading at grade level and above, math at grade level and above, and so, so a lot of the changes, and kind of some changes that I've made in my budget have really targeted, are we providing the interventions that the students need? Are we, are we pushing in where we need to? We are moving, kind of a big change for next year, we're moving to a pretty significant master schedule that is an RTI model, or Response to Intervention model, so she had discussed where she is moving from her minutes, her reading minutes specifically, to ninety, so we're at, at Mark Twain Elementary, we're moving our reading minutes, and then we're starting right out of the gate, ten fifteen, eight fifteen to ten fifteen, so we're going a hundred and twenty minutes, solid when the kids are fresh, and just trying to follow the research as much as possible, that really, when we have the students at Mark Twain in that K through two window, that's, that's kind of like, that's the open window for us to teach kids to read. After that, it becomes very expensive, and resources need to be poured into catching kids up, so our focus has been reading and math at grade level, and trying to get as close as we can as to the district goals. So, with that being said, fortunately, we have been able to maintain teachers in the classroom. A couple of changes, again, everybody has been talking about the PE grants, I met a couple of times with Mr. Nielsen about, about what that number actually looks like for us. So, basically, what, in, in the, in my profile page, what you'll see is an asterisk next to physical education, it's one point oh currently, and that is funded by the grant. Next year, it's listed as point five, and the reason behind that is the uncertainty of the grant. So, the information that we have right now, we've been fortunate to have the PE grant, and so, maybe they take that into consideration, and they spread the wealth a little bit, and end up kind of being left out in the cold, which is, which is fine, so I'm just trying to be smart and plan for that. So, we could, right now, my budget reflects that we are planning for anywhere from a point five PE teacher to a point eight PE teacher that we will have to fund this year. So, that's a significant change. Also, I am reducing in funds my dean position, that's listed as an intervention, and she does a number of things from zones of regulation for the little ones, teaching some lessons in the classroom, guidance lessons in the classroom, kind of choice-making, which is typically what we deal with in terms of behaviors at, at the K through two land, where, you know, a lot of things happen, but they're age-appropriate things, and so, we try to respond accordingly. So, those are some interventions that we have in place. We're, we're, in terms of general fund and paying for physical education, we're just, we're a little early. Ms. Hannan previous to me, set aside some money, I set aside some money for this year, but we're having to tap into that money right now, and we're a little bit short in terms of funding a full-time PE teacher, so we're trying to do the best we can. You will also see that the media position is a one point oh currently. That teacher is a TOSA, she, she is in the library, stationed in the library, but she also is our technology, point person, our technology supporter, so she manages all of the app programs, loads and downloads, and updates all of our iPads, which we are a one-to-one school. In fact, one of my line items is reduced from fifteen thousand to ten thousand, because we were working up to kind of having some reserved iPads, so now, we are, we are in a position where we're kind of in maintenance phase now, so we're going to start setting up a plan to cycle out some of our older iPads that actually don't update anymore. So, little bit of an expense there, but it's less than buying, you know, it's less than buying big chunks of random iPads. So, so I had a retirement in the classroom, my media licensed staff is now going into a classroom, and then, I am, I am going to fill that position with a classified person, and down below in the classified staff on the profile sheet, you'll see that I paid for, or four hours, or paid for a media assistant. The district actually covered four hours this year because of the transition in buildings to help out with budgets, and so, I am having to absorb that cost this year within my general fund. So, media assistant, I have one full-time person, you'll see it's ten point five hours, I have one full-time person, and then I'm roughly going to, going to budget for a half of a person to help in the media, and then we're hoping we can get some volunteers to, to help push books back on shelves or help us with tasks in the library. And then, again, I'm, same as Leslie, trying to provide more interventions in the classroom, more support for teachers, and so, the, the other hours are kind of going into classified hours or educational assistance. So, I think, I think those are the main things that, that jump out. Again, ninety-seven percent of my budget is in people, so it's really hard to trim, there's not a lot, not a lot of trimming, so. Any questions?
Well, I'll ask you the same question, too. How's the building work for you?
I think the building has, the building has worked out well. Obviously, for us, the playground is, is very important, and so, we have some construction going on, but I think our, our kids adapted pretty well, and they were pretty happy when we got the covered playground structure. We're, we're, we're kind of fine-tuning that, and I've been working with Mr. Orlando and the, and the maintenance department facilities, and trying to, trying to figure out how we're going to have a wall that kind of protects that weather side, because we'll actually have days where it's raining, and half of the covered playground structure is wet, and so, the kids go to the, they have to go to the dry area, so we have some little rules in there that help them, help them stay dry on some of those days, but we were trying to go out every single day and utilize that. We had a little, we had a little... We had a little, you know, just, you know, something that we didn't account for, but as the rain rolls off the hill, first couple of days, we had just some really, really bad weather, and we literally had water pouring across the concrete underneath there. And so, since then, we've made some adjustments. I think there's plans for a French drain to get the water to go around, but that was another, you know, just adjustment we had to make. So, but it's been going really well. Playground is very important. The gym space has been helpful, having a separation between where we serve lunch and breakfast, and where we have PE has been an upgrade from Eugene Field. And, you know, the restrooms, we have some more restrooms for students. We do have some upgrades that are, I think are going to happen during the summer in terms of making some adjustments, just in height for the young kids. We have some little kids and stuff. I think the classrooms and the configuration of the hallway has been a benefit for teachers. They literally can walk across the hallway and see another grade level and be able to kind of collaborate or share students. In some cases, we do have some students coming across for maybe a lesson or a portion of a lesson to get instruction from another teacher. So, it just kind of helps, just a little variety and bring some change to some of those classes. Any questions?
Thank you, Greg. Kevin?
Buick Creek.
Hi, folks. First, just a little bit on our profile page. We've seen a lot of growth in our enrollment over the past three years or so at Buick Creek. So, in fact, at this point in the school year, we have about 14 or 15 more kids than we did at this point last year, and that's with accepting no transfers this year at any grade level. That will change next year. You see a little bit larger number, not a lot, but I think that the number for next year is probably pretty conservative and will likely be more than that. So, I think we're looking in the 330 or so plus range, because next year, we will be able to accept transfers coming into kindergarten only. So, that'll make a big difference. We weren't typically good this year, but next year, we will. Onto the budget worksheet. We're very fortunate, kind of as a result, to be able to keep our staffing where it's at. On the salaries, one of our educational assistants, we have 14 hours budgeted. So, one of those people will be kind of backfill into our title program, people reading interventions where they are. You've heard a lot so far tonight already about, you know, what's going to happen to the title funding. So, we're prepared to kind of keep people on board in our title room regardless. Then, down below, really, the biggest change that is notable is there's just more money in the computers, technology, supplies. And that's just a result of the increase based on our growth. We're going to be able to, for example, put 65-inch smart TVs into every classroom next year out of our building budget. We've got about five of those now. We've been kind of going as we could. We'll be able to finish that out in every teacher's classroom, specialist's classroom next year, right out of this budget. iPads for the little kids and Chromebooks for third grade on up will be a partnership of our building budget along with the district funds. If that happens again, like it has been the last couple of years, that's been great. And our PTT, our parent club, matches or even additional, it matches those funds, to put more technology in the kids' hands. And we should be able to get to one-to-one by next year, so we're pleased about that. Then, on the backside, we have 10,000 set aside for a new reader board. We've been without a reader board at Buick Creek for about two years now, after ours blew away in a windstorm and was demolished. So, we're partnering with the district. Our parent club will pitch in undoubtedly so that we can get a nice electronic reader board out there. So, that'll look good. We're looking at bids, and Lauren Stanley's helping us out right now to kind of narrow that down and look, see what the best fit would be. Probably a good timing with the seismic project and everything else that's going to be going on out there over the summer. And then, we have 70,000 set aside right now. Forty of that is for our PE teacher, so we have two PE teachers at Buick Creek, one for the little kids, one for the middle school kids. And so, we have money to cover that position next year if we don't get the grant. And then, 30,000 of the 70 is just because we have that. So, that will sit there. If we need to pull some of that out, again, what happens with title, that remains to be seen, so if we need to dip into that, we will. But we feel like we're in good shape going into next year. Feel fortunate about that. Any questions?
What are the demographics like in your school now? I know it used to be, even with the three different languages.
We're about 25% with the Russian Old Believer, and between 15 and 20% native Spanish speakers. And like our district, demographic-wise, our free and reduced count is dropping as well. Good news for families, bad news for reading intervention programs. So, that's kind of what we're doing, and then just more gives up there.
Any other questions? Thank you, Kevin.
All right, thank you.
Mark?
Good evening, folks. You've heard a pretty consistent message from most of the folks tonight, status quo, which is what Silvercrest is budgeting for next year. There's a few small changes that I'll highlight. On page one, it appears that I've reduced our media assistant position, but that didn't really happen. That was a reduction last year after this committee had already met. So, that position didn't exist this year, so it's not really a reduction. It looks like I've reduced my secretary by $12,000, and trust me, I would never do that. She is way too valuable. As Kirsten mentioned before, two hours of her secretary was funded last year out of a homeless title fund. Well, as that responsibility became mine and I moved to Silvercrest, my secretary then became that person. So, those two hours are now funded on my secretary. So, I took that $12,000, and rather than spending it, you'll note on page two, $12,452 reserved for next year. I just put it in reserve. Being the first year of Biennium and the unknowns of pers and a lot of unknowns, just felt like the right thing to do to have a small little petition. There was a small increase in substitutes, and that was just to cover an increase in people costs. A small increase in computer hardware. One of the things that is, will be my goal this year and years beyond is improving the technology at Silvercrest, and so I bumped that up a small amount. I bumped up the computer software line by $500 to offset the increased cost for our accelerated reader software. And then, again, the $12,000 reserved for next year. Otherwise, everything else is status quo. Our FTE is status quo. And we're very fortunate and appreciate the board helping us because it would not have been status quo had you folks not done that. Questions?
Do you get any transfer students that you're pretty far out?
What an awesome question. Well, let me tell you about that. We are actively campaigning to get students that are looking for a K-8 experience that's just a short bus ride out of town. We have a bus stop at the library. We also plan to add one at the end of Pioneer, so anyone that lives in Pioneer that would like to come up to Silvercrest, we'd be happy to offer a K-8 experience. So, to answer your question, we do, but we're looking for more.
So, how are you going to advertise that?
What another great question. So, one of the things that we recently did, we attended the last first Friday, when I say "we," myself and three of my teachers, and we created a trifold little handout, and we went to the various real estate offices in town, and we handed those out and asked the realtors as families move into town that are looking for a K-8 experience, if they would hand them that pamphlet. And we're not looking at competing with the other schools in the district, but schools fill up. Buick Creek fills up, and Evergreen fills up, so we'd like to be an option.
How many more students ideally?
Well, we're currently at 134. In a perfect world, we wouldn't have any blends, Jake, and that's one of the things that is my long-term goal, is to have straight grades. Next year, we'll have two blended classes, 3-4 and a 5-6 blend. To answer your question, we could easily take 25 students.
You could be pushing like 170, 175?
I'm thinking 160 is a pretty good number for us with the blends. If we went to straight classes, you know, between 20 and 25 students a class times eight, or nine classes, count kindergarten. So, we have the space, the physical space. Thanks, folks.
First, I can interject there, Mr. Chair. We do, and began this a few years ago, we provide bus service for transfer students to all of our rural schools now, where that's something that we didn't have in the past. So, Mark's example of Silvercrest is replicated at all of our rural schools as part of our transportation package.
Good evening, Jamie.
Good evening.
Which one first?
Well, I'll start with Evergreen, and I just want to say thank you for having the principals here tonight and listening to our budgets and taking into consideration. I think it is an important year for our district, and it's just another night for you guys and all your busy schedules, and just want to say how much appreciated that and being here, listening. I'll start with Evergreen. Out of the $566,000 allocated, there's only about 30 left, so it goes pretty quick. And both schools, Evergreen and Victor Point, just every bit of the money we can put into educational assistance, teachers, amazing educators in front of our kids, that's where the money goes, and we're committed to that. And so, every year, that's kind of the goal and objective at both schools. In both the elementary and middle school, you'll see line items for printing, supplies, adoptions, periodicals. All that money goes to workbooks, supplies, things that are going to help our teachers accomplish our district goals. Reading, math, and anything they need to be successful goes in those line items. You can see those line items are fairly close to years past, and not much has changed with those line items. Evergreen, kind of a well-oiled machine. They understand what they need. They understand what they need to teach kids. Our staffing is where it needs. In both schools, staffing remains the same, and I'll talk about Victor Point's increase. You'll notice a $12,756 reserved for next year. That's quite a bit, actually, for Evergreen School. We're really hoping to kind of build that just a little bit each year. We're at a point where we've been able to put some technology funds together over the last couple of years, but I think within the next two or three years, we're going to need to put quite a bit into technology for our students. And so, in two years, we really plan to kind of develop a three-year scope of what we need and plan accordingly, working with our EPTC and our staff to get there. You'll notice a difference on Evergreen in the educational assistance number all the way up top. 79,000 comparatively to 67 the year before. I'm not sure, me and Steve have talked about this, but the additional E8 time right below that line of 17,4, I just moved up. It's just cleaner. It's easy for me to, it's all the same. And so, that's why you'll notice an increase in that. Any questions with Evergreen?
Jamie, a couple of things in the absence of the principal?
Yes.
I see a jump in the supplies, including frame and also the computer hardware. Is there some that you would do for a laptop upgrade, or is that how?
We don't know.
Do you need a new laptop, or?
I don't need a new laptop, but I think our students might. And that's some discretionary money. Our 6'8" teacher has probably 1987 laptops. The year 1987, no, they're probably 2,000. And so, they keep swapping, and so that money is any, we don't have any funds really. We have a little bit of funds for repairs of 1,000, but with our, all of our technology, 1,000 could go in about two days, and so that, that fund is to make sure we make it through the year.
So, just kind of holding it there and you're budgeting as a place, or is there something?
That's right.
Go sell it. You've got it. Okay.
How do you divide your time between these schools?
Hey, they're eight minutes apart, and I love to figure out how. It's fun. Some days, back and forth three or four times, and I get to see something here and there. It's pretty easy, actually. It's been a blessing. Anything else with Evergreen? Victor Point, you'll notice just in FTE at the very top, I've added just kind of a 1.0 FTE for PE. You've heard on the PE grant, and we are not expecting that. It would be an awesome thing if we did get that grant, but we are budgeting for a full-time PE teacher, which would increase us a full-time body. So, that's the difference there. Again, in elementary and middle school programs, we have committed technology at Victor Point, and we do have a three-year plan put in place with our parent-teacher club, with our district and funds that come from our district and our school budget. We plan to spend about $23,000 in last year, this year, and next year, and we have been able to get one-to-one with iPads K2, Chromebooks 3.8. And now that we have that, how do we use it correctly? How do we keep up with it? How, we're finding little keypads and boards and things that we have to repair. And so, it's all a process now for rotation and thinking not only one year ahead, but three, four, five, and how do we go on a rotation basis to where we're not coming up with year after year and we're shooting from the head and a really solid plan. And so, you'll see 6,500 computer hardware for the elementary and 75 for the middle. Those are just numbers. It all goes to what's best for kids.
So, you're increasing the coaches' quota. Are you adding some sports?
You know what we're doing, actually? A lot of times, we pay for like a coach's stipend out of our pay-to-play or our agency accounts. So, our kids pay $50 a sport, so you don't see it in this. It's another school budget. We have budgeted all in this this year because we are in need of, well, a long list, but we are in need of uniforms for our volleyball, our boys and girls basketball. Probably been 10 years. The kids are looking not professional, not how they should with how hard they work, and so we have some line items that we need to increase. We have a new PE program. We're trying to develop a PE program. So, we're putting the funds here, but we're still using it all the same.
So, what sports do you have?
We have volleyball. Go ahead. We have boys and girls basketball.
No soccer anymore?
No, no soccer.
Do you have soccer?
We do have a track in the spring coming up. I'm pretty excited about it, so.
If you do get the PE grant, what are you looking at doing with that money? Saving it or spending it?
Yeah, it'll go in reserves, and as you can see, the staff has done a remarkable job in the last five years of penny pinching and saving for just this reason, in case we do need to fund and still have 155,000 in reserves without that. And we would definitely save that, and then we are also looking at tech, more technology, fix schools or classrooms and things for teachers.
Thank you, Jamie. Andy, I guess you're substituting tonight?
I am. Dustin, may he apologize if he couldn't be here this evening. I think you'll find that this is really pretty easy, similar to some of the other presentations that you've heard for Central House School. Really very little difference in the profile, in fact, the staffing and classified licensed staff all remain the same. And he's, Mr. Haney, is anticipating about a pretty much flat enrollment. However, with some of the recent information about the number of kindergarten students, wouldn't be surprised if that were to increase. Recall that Central House School is the location, kindergarten site location for Central House students and Prattham students. So Prattham School is essentially a 1 through 8 school. All of the kindergarten kids go to Central House for that first year. However, he does a very nice job of creating that ownership back in Prattham when those students return this first year. Otherwise, the only change is actually a reduction that you'll see in their elementary regular programs with computer hardware. I can't say with certainty, but I believe it's because he spent the last couple of years really doing a nice job of reducing Chromebooks and access to student technology at Central House School and he's backed off on that in order to balance his budgets. Otherwise, everything else remains the same at Central House School.
Andy, they have some uniforms also, do you know what sports they have or what sports?
I can't, other than assuming it's very similar to what Jamie just shared with you. For many of our rural schools, all of our schools for that matter, it's, they don't replace uniforms very often. In fact, occasionally they get hand-me-downs from the high school and they get some more like that out of them. Prattham School, slight increase in enrollment for next year, which is good news. Even just a few students at a school that's a maximum of 80 kids makes a huge difference in the revenue that's generated for those students or for those schools. But again, licensed staff and classified staff remains the same. I believe there is also an actual increase in technology for Prattham School. He's bumping that to $3,500 next year, trying to prioritize again student investment. I'm pretty certain that Mr. Haney is matching that with the district contribution orders, provide support for Chromebooks and iPads and technology support for his students at Prattham School. He does have a planned reserve at Prattham School for next year. It's a healthy opportunity for him. Otherwise, that's the extent of what I can share with you about those two schools. I'd be happy to send any questions to Mr. Haney for you.
You have to know was the increase due to in-district kids in the boundaries or transfers?
Prattham School is proportionally our largest transfer school. So I can tell you, he does everything he can to keep up the enrollment there. The current enrollment or the October 1st enrollment of 73 is actually, I think, the smallest that he's experienced over the last couple of years. So the three-year rolling average has, I think, ticked up for him, so that would make sense. So he's doing what he can to get that number back up to 80 and there to maintain that. I would say the planned reserves and the penny pinching at Prattham School, they do a very nice job of maintaining low purchases over the course of the year. I think all contribute to that. The number of student transfers at Prattham School is over 50%.
And most of them from Salem District?
Correct, many of those are from Salem. A number come from Silver Falls as well. Yeah, Prattham is a very attractive spot for Salem Chrysler students who essentially closed, Salem Chrysler closed the majority of their K8 schools a few years ago.
Andy, a general budget question, not anything necessarily to do with the two you presented for. We had some snow days this year that we didn't have school. How many days was it that we didn't have any school?
Four.
Four, okay. And are we extending the school year at all?
The board took action to modify the current school year calendar. So we made up actually a total of the, we did make up the four days, three are within the existing calendar and we added one day to the end of the school year as a professional development day for teachers, for staff members.
Okay, so when we lose a day, a whole day, does that save, I mean, does that save the district some money that they would have, you know, that they would have opened up that day?
I may lean on Steve a little bit with that because he can articulate that a little bit better. There's really no cost savings other than things like, you know, we're not operating food service that day. We are operating our buildings, we're still heating them and we do have some staff present that day, especially custodial maintenance staff taking care of our buildings. But there really are no cost savings because licensed staff members are paid according to their collective bargaining agreement, even with snow days, but we were able to make those up through non-student contact day, like grading day and parent conference day this year. Classified staff members, and then the other four days, they are having a one-day loss of pay as a result, but we were able to make up the other three days within the existing calendar. So there's, I don't like considering it a cost savings, it's just the reality of the situation. If you don't just tack on days at the end of the year, then you don't realize that.
Right, okay.
Do you want to add anything to that?
No, there's, I mean, a little bit, but not.
Right, nothing significant that's going to be a school decision.
Busing, yes, so if we don't make up a school day, costs about $11,000 a day, busing, it's about $2 million a year, I think is what it is. But the thing to remember about that is 70% of our gross transportation cost is reimbursed through the state school fund form. So, you know, we, you know, $11,000 is what it costs us maybe 3,500 out of our pocket. So, you know, it saves a little bit. And another question that comes up frequently is on the revenue side of missed days. Sometimes people think that, you know, we miss, well, not necessarily a snow day, but if a child's out of school for a day or two or three, we lose the funding for that particular student and that's not the case. It's, the reason it's called the average daily membership is because each student is a member and we're not funded based on each day's attendance. Once a student misses 10 straight days, then they have to be taken off the membership and that's when we would start to lose, you know. So, you know, not having a school day or having a student gone per day would not result in a loss of revenue on that side of the equation.
All right, thank you. All right, high school.
Good evening, Justin.
Good evening. Wade Lockett?
Principal of Silverdale High School.
Social principal?
Athletic director.
We've been fortunate looking towards next year's budget that again, much like so many other schools, we're not going to be looking at cuts in personnel, which is nice. So that can be attributed to, we have seen an increase in ADM in addition to a bump in the amount per ADM. So that's helpful. So I'll go down through the changes you might note here. One, first is in our drama, art, music area. There's a .17 that we had to add back into the budget. Last year, we absorbed that, it wasn't a line item in the budget. That is for our zero-period jazz band teacher, so we put that in the budget this year. Right below that, health education, there's a difference going in the other direction there because we have a teacher teach all social studies. In the future, we'll be teaching all social studies and not teaching a section of health or PE. So a lot of this is just kind of a balancing game. We're not necessarily seeing a big difference, but some pieces of the puzzle have been moved around. Down, a couple more lines on the language arts department, you can see a pretty big change there. The teacher that we moved, that was moving completely into language arts, English language arts and out of social studies. So you see a .5 difference there. Down about seven or eight lines under technology, there's a slight increase there. That's due to Scan TV and some money and resource we put towards that. Kind of a co-teaching model, if you will, sort of with a certified person and a certified person teaching that course. A little bit further down, it gets a little messy with some of the things we've done with our secretarial staff. But again, that all comes very close to balancing out. If you totaled up the hours there, there would be about a 200-hour difference, which is we bumped a couple of our secretarial staff, one in help with the attendance office and the other in supporting the counseling office. Mostly prior to the school year starting, having that extra support that's been needed for some time. Okay, so going down, let's see, I don't think you're going to see any changes. You'll notice as we get down into the department areas, we really, and not with each department chair this year to go over the budget and I know that they really appreciated that and having some input into what we did, even though I'd already told them that we wanted to try to hold things flat unless there was vital, you know, vital needs for next year. So you'll see that these are, for the most part, pretty flat. The first is the English, language department. There is some, the bottom line there is it stayed flat, 17,105. But they, the way they decided to shuffle some of the resources in their department changed. Down towards the bottom of the page there in science, we took on a robotics club last year and most of the expense there is all going along with robotics. But the plan there is to, to make that part of our curriculum. Hopefully be able to operate as a course where students can also learn, earn credit, not just high school credit, but also the potential work to, to earn dual credit or accelerated credit through gym activity, if you call it. So Justin added expenses there. Hopefully we can make up some of that with some grant money that we could earn maybe as well. Onto the second page, don't really see any changes in the arts. The instrumental music department, we had some great sharing of resource go on here. This was actually offered up by our vocal music teacher to share some funds with our music department so that they could purchase some instruments. So you'll see about a little over $3,000 sharing of funds there. And we're going to keep, we can't make that so they know later on that, you know, hey, this is a give and take. Sometimes one year you might need it, next year they might need it. And looking at all that mathematics, we were up for adoption of textbooks this year, but pushed that out. And so instead of adopting textbooks, the department along with the administration agreed to bump the print budget there. And that's why you see the print budget is really what went up mostly there to adopt. One, the materials weren't really what we needed with new standards and the costs would have been well over probably $30,000 to do that. So the alternative was to bump the print budget and go that route and the department's very happy with that. So some savings there. Moving on down to second language, pretty small bump there. About 16, over $1,600. That was mostly to purchase what we call mini novels for Spanish classes and add the small novels.
Are we missing pages? I don't see like any of those.
I had the same thing I had.
We're missing that page.
Page three.
This is for me, I don't know, it's not saying my on page two, but.
Shelley's got it. Do you have it there?
Didn't see it yet. What's going on? I think it's the, after the robotics, everything after robotics we didn't have.
Yeah, so after robotics, are your paintings out of work?
What's after robotics?
Mine after robotics jumps into arts. And.
I use technology next.
Yeah, that's the painting missing. Shelley's copying it now. It'll be hard.
So we need to back up to just past robotics and the other one?
They have a technology education at the top.
You know, we can go through that.
Yeah, if you just want to move ahead of that, Justin, you just come back to the technology ed. Yes.
We want to miss two, I'm sorry. Okay, so technology education, difference there.
Guess we'll wait.
Same time, we could go over the co-regular budget.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Shifer, or do that. And so I shift the area.
Which is relatively simple and should be able to fill just enough time before we can transition back to Mr. Wong here. The budget for co-regular is going to be pretty similar. I think that when we came in this year, our previous athletic director did a pretty outstanding job of getting the co-regular budget and athletic budget pretty sound. So I appreciate that, number one. Most of the increases that you see are going to be just a payroll increase. These are going to be supervision things, there are going to be coaching stipends and there are some increases that come with payroll as far as that's concerned. So you do see that increase. There are a few other added expenses that kind of came in. These are added expenses that we believe give our kids additional opportunities to get involved in the school, to connect with the school. The first one should have, maybe should have put it in as a new line item, but it looks like it got absorbed in the summer weight room supervision line right there. It's a small coaching stipend for a unified coach. If anybody came out to the Unified Games this year, saw those in the paper, this was a team of students that essentially it was a basketball team that allowed special ed students an opportunity to compete with other schools in the league, other schools around the county. I believe was one of the highlights of the winter season. It was a lot of fun. It's a small stipend, it's about 600 bucks, which is reflected in kind of an hourly stipend. It was about 30 to 35 hours of work that one of our coaches volunteered that time this year. We think it's definitely worthy of a small stipend for him to come back and coach that team again next year because of how good it was for our kids, our student body as a whole and them competing with other students around the league. So that would be one. I'll come back to the golf stipend here in a moment, we're on page two. You do see increased expenses when it comes to officials for high school soccer. Officials are just costing more. We've gone over budget, it looks like over the past couple of years there. Also, we added a third team, so we had three girls' teams this year in soccer. It just increases the expense as far as officials are concerned. And so we up those lines to reflect that. The biggest chunk that we're looking at adding back is a golf coach, actually a head golf coach and an assistant golf coach. We've got about, I think we started with about 30 golfers this year, we're down to about 25. Some of that has to do with, you know, students and whether or not they're able to pay or whether or not they're able to make it out to the golf course. But we feel if we are able to hire a golf coach to supervise those kids, that it kind of brings a connection back to the school, gives us more oversight and we believe that it fits within our allocation and so we've requested to add. The reason there's a head golf coach and an assistant golf coach there is to be able to supervise both boys and girls when they go away to competitions. And so that's what we see.
So do they practice together?
They can practice together, yes, they could. In fact, they do today, yes.
Is, in the basketball, boys and girls, have they gone or are they going to officiating in three-person crews?
Yeah, is that in here? I feel like it should have been here, but it's all soccer. Yes, and that's, if we didn't add that expense, I feel like it should have been there because we did have that conversation. There it is, yeah. So the reason, it's just not, I didn't make, we don't have a note of it on my sheet here. The reason you see the increase in the boys and girls basketball officiating is because Middle Land Conference is one of the conferences. is because Middle Am Conference is one of the conferences that decided last year to jump from two officials to three officials, the OSAA. When you begin to play in the postseason, which Silverton has been fortunate enough to play in the postseason quite often over the last several years, they go to three, three-man crews, the OSAA state level. There were several leagues around the state that decided to experiment with that, jump up to that. The OSAA was considering making that mandatory, but they were gonna give a little bit of grace period before they actually made that jump. The Middle Am Conference was one of the ones that decided to jump to three-man officiating crews. And so that's why you see that expense.
Now, it is, is that only implemented for when you're playing your league, other league opponents? The three-man crews come into effect and preseason non-league opponents?
The, any, any Middle Am Conference home game, because we get them all from the same association, any Middle Am Conference home game is gonna be a three, three-person crew. So.
There's enough officials out there?
We are working really hard, official retention, retention. The OSAA actually has a committee to recruit and retain officials. So we're increasing that number and retaining them. Working on it.
So are all of your sports pretty well participated in? Are there some sports that aren't really a good?
Well, there's some sports that, you know, whether they're an individual sport or. Now, I'd say most of our teams, we have a significant number of participants in. Some of them are quite larger than others. We pushed two hundred members on the track team. We were pushing, you know, ninety members on the swim team this year. So it's, they're really large. And truth be told, when you talk about teams that are that large, it really does, just to have eyes on those students at all times, you need more people. We don't want to take opportunities out of kids' hands. We don't wanna take opportunities away from kids to be involved and feel connected with the school. So for as many sports as we possibly can, we try to maintain a no-cut policy when we can. When we have enough students or enough participants trying out or involved in, in programs that we are required to make cuts, we actually try to make another team. So we've seen that with volleyball, we've seen that with soccer. We actually came really close with basketball this year. We ended up having to cut a number of kids, we could find another coach to, to create one more program. We weren't sure we had the facility space to be able to facilitate that as well, so. But yes, we, we do a very good job of getting our kids involved.
What's the fee, you know, to play a sport?
It's a hundred dollars.
A hundred dollars?
Yeah.
And there's a maximum per year?
There's a maximum per year for free. Greg, you might be able to answer that better than I would.
Five hundred dollars for a family.
For a family.
For families for the year. And then it's also two hundred and fifty dollars for one individual for the year. So we give them a fifty dollar discount if they'll play three sports.
So anybody plays three sports, yeah. Christie generally works, works on that for me. I agree, creates the practice, so I appreciate that. Any other questions?
Thank you, gentlemen. Oh, that's right, the missing page. There you go, okay, alright.
So we're gonna jump back in at tech education?
So, yes, so our, the ones we printed off over here, I had, I had inadvertently printed for Shelley. And I wanna thank Shelley, she does a great job putting the notebooks together, but I printed the front and back on Silverton High School, it's like five pages. And I tried to, I tried to save paper, so I had to do front and back. But for this project, we go one-sided, so it wasn't one-sided. It only copied the one side when she did it for the notebooks. Justin's print job that he did over at the high school has a much different page break, so I think I'm gonna have to pass this page out too, which probably gonna have some repeat information that you have. But the first, the first one you got should have most of the missing information. And I think the first one, maybe line item on student safety on the top of that last page, you don't have in the notebook, so it's a little bit of a puzzle, I apologize.
So where are we starting with?
Do we, are, were we good up to tech ed? I thought I heard, even though we might.
No, I think there is the same. Between robotics and technical arts, we don't have anything.
Yeah, robotics, robotics, I think.
So let's start in then the Arts. Does that cover after robotics for you guys? Hopefully.
At least someone have Arts, I don't think.
The Arts? This one. What number Justin is at the bottom?
Page two.
Page?
Page two.
Our original ones don't have page numbers.
Why don't you just read it and we'll listen, okay?
Uh, yeah, I'm just hitting the highlights where there's changes, so take your notes. So I'll back up a little bit. We didn't get to see this, it might've been confusing you because you didn't see it in front of you, but we essentially held instrumental music and vocal music flat, but between those departments, they shared funds. So that's why they're, that's why it's showing more in instrumental than in vocal. Vocal was down, instrumental went up. And then the next thing I had shared is in mathematics. Since we didn't adopt textbooks, we pushed that out, I believe, five years. We just, we bumped the print budget to save. Print budget went up by about three thousand dollars. The adoption of textbooks that would not really have been any use will cost us about thirty.
The books are in good shape, if you help.
Yeah, and they just don't really use, you know, you can use, you can use the textbooks, but it's not like you're using those every day in math class. They're developing, they're using worksheets, they're, you know, designing and developing problems. So it's, yeah, textbooks are, not that they, I mean, definitely they can always be used in math. I think in a lot of other areas though, you're, you're seeing less and less of that because teachers are going directly to like online or using, using worksheets or using packets that they put together. Yeah, so. Then shifting to Second Language, again, you might not see that, was where we bought the mini novels. So the small increase there of about fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars purchasing mini novels and get a really small amount of computer software and hardware of one hundred and fifty dollars. And those mini novels are what the kids do every day. They do SSR, which stands for Nine-Sustained Reading. They spend at least ten minutes every day at the beginning of class on all the Spanish classes reading. The technology education area, substantial increase here in having to update both hardware and software. This doesn't even count, a bunch of hardware that we had to buy for a different depart, different area, engineering upgrading computers there as well. But here was an Adobe suite for computer classes and a hardware upgrade for classroom computers with added memory and graphic cards. So it's just, you know, one of those things, if you put it off long enough and technology catches up, you know, or the way things, and you've got to pretty much abandon the hardware completely and the program, or you've gotta ante up and put the money into it. Where at that point this year, we had to put in about eleven-five in that area, eleven thousand five hundred dollars. Career-related learning, we added in there. Our link crew stipends, this was being paid for, the time card before we wanted to capture that, those two people. There's, there's two staff members that do that work. It does go on throughout the year, but most of the work happens before we bring in the freshmen, beginning of the year in training the link crew to work with the freshmen. So we actually added that in, so that's a two thousand dollar increase. Arts and communication or drama. One thing I noticed this year at our productions, our, our drama productions was, in my opinion, and in talking to Mr. Ostrath about this, is kind of lack of sets. Our sets are very basic. And I had asked him, you know, what, you know, what's it, what would it take? And obviously, well, a little more money, a little more time. So that was kind of throwing a bone to the, to the drama department to, hey, let's, let's see what we can do to bump the quality of our sets up a little bit. So that's, it's not a lot, but two thousand dollars is still better than nothing to help with those sets. Stays, stays flat through, sorry, I gotta start turning on the bottom, Business Management stayed flat. Health occupations, the only increase we see there is an increase in the hospital contract. So we saw an increase there of about forty-five hundred dollars. And we don't see any other changes until we get down to attendance and social work services. We added in nearly eleven hundred dollars here in incentives, and that's with our attendance initiatives. And we're trying to reward students for improved attendance. Sometimes those are real simple things, you know, whether it's a little treat, pack, or certificate, or what have you. But we, we added in nearly eleven hundred dollars for incentives for next year because we found that we were under budgeted, under budgeted there. In that, I believe, same category, we also, with supervision, mostly event supervision, we had, my understanding, looking back at the past budget, we've always been under budgeted and we've always went in the negative. So we increased that by fifty-five hundred dollars based on what we were in the negative before because we just always went over. And we also blow that under equipment. We have, we have budgeted to purchase a new golf cart. One of our security golf carts is now on its last leg. Again, everything's, holds pretty constant then till we get down to instructional staff development. This has not been a big issue with the collaboration grant, as, as much as it will be now if the collaboration grant's gone. So I set aside a little over two thousand dollars there just for essentially PD, if we were gonna bring somebody in, I mean, we, we have money for this, but knowing that the collaboration grant's going away, we wanted to make sure we put a little bit into our PD in staff development. Then the next change down, operation and maintenance and plant services. This is something that we haven't picked up, it's not picked up by the district, but it is pretty minimal, was crane maintenance out in our ag shop. We have to have that basically recertified every year that it's safe, that costs about six hundred bucks. So those are, those are categorically the different areas, the changes that you'll see. Again, we were, we're pretty fortunate in seeing our ADM go up and the, the dollar amount per student go up that has helped us out. So, you know, our percentage is, I think we have probably around eighty-eight or eighty-nine percent caught up in staffing and the rest is not staffing. So not quite like what you have with, with the, with the smaller elementary K students, but still, the staffing is always a significant part of the budget. One other thing I would just share, we have not as, not as much going into reserve as you've seen in the past. A lot of that's, again, for expenses that are part of it, it's not things like, we are purchasing some Chromebooks and we're doing that out of this year's budget, which actually reduce what we're able to carry over and reserve. But you can't very well purchase four set, you know, well, even if you're buying a set and expect, you know, to purchase that on next year's budget. Get them in and have the teachers and staff, the teachers and students knowing how to operate this new piece of equipment right off the start of the year. So the goal here is to get these purchased, to get them in the building. Staff learn how to use those and be ready to roll come September instead of having to use the first couple, two or three months figuring that out. So.
What's the student capacity for the building now?
Well, right now, we're about in the high twelve hundreds, you know, right, right under thirteen. But I don't know what the actual capacity is, I would say that we have quite a bit of capacity. And the main reason I say that is when I, when I look at the building, we've got some space that's, that's not really utilized, and especially if we moved more towards Chromebook. Use, we have quite a bit of computer lab space. I think you're gonna see less and less of a need in, in schools for computer labs because they're gonna be a thing of the past. They're gonna have carts sitting in the room, or you're gonna go grab them from the library or the tech center and bring it out into your room, et cetera. So there's, there's space in the building for instructional space. I think the greater concern is probably our parking space and maybe common space, those other spaces, but classroom space, I think, are gonna be pretty good for a while.
The building was designed for fourteen hundred students, the building footprint itself, which means it could probably house fifteen hundred or more if necessary.
Anybody else? Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Okay, so this is the point in the meeting where we have audience with visitors. So don't push and shove, just one at a time, feel free to come up. And if you would, for the record, give us your name and then also sign your name and your address, that would be appreciated.
Hi, I'm Sarah Weisman, I live here in Silverton. Thank you for your time serving and also listening. First of all, I wanna make a disclaimer statement that I'm here tonight speaking on behalf of myself and my almost-kindergarten, and not on behalf of any nonprofit organization that I'm associated with. While you might not have direct control over specific programs, you are and do approve increases and decreases in the overall budget. Last year, I pleaded to the Budget Committee to not cut music at Mark Twain Elementary. The then-principal stated that music would continue with the regular teachers. I wanna ask all of you, did you follow up on this? Did you visit Mark Twain and did you find out if this truly happened? Because I can tell you that it did not. In October, the music instruments were still boxed up in storage. I have reports from parents who have told me that there is no music going on in their child's classroom, and that one report was, Music Time was a drawing of a picture of a made-up instrument on a piece of paper. Last week, the high school wind ensemble placed first in league, and the choir took second by only three points. Most of the wind ensemble is comprised of over eighty-five percent coming up from our largest elementary schools here in town. How are we going to foster programs like our successful high school band and choir if we don't start from the bottom? And now, tonight, more cuts at Scotts Mills and Robert Frost. The other night, at the school board forum, Irv claimed that we are a coveted school district. We're not going to be coveted if we keep cutting programs. And we will not meet our district goals of a hundred percent graduation with rates, with cutting programs that our kids enjoy and thrive in. And while I appreciate that those of you who are up for reelection are Wally and Erin, that you support the Arts, and you've publicly stated so. Last year, you did not vote to sustain them, and while you did have a work session about it, the board and this committee still did not fight for the Arts. There are grants available that fit in for the Oregon Music Education Association and Federal Music Standards to work into the budget. Why do we not have a centralized budget? And why are individual schools, as we hear tonight, finding their own grants? I would like to see the district post these budget figures that you all have in your hands tonight for the public to see, because as a public member, I can't look at your folders. To increase transparency. I personally am tired of not hearing very many questions asked by our board members and by this committee, except for Betty Jo, thank you. And I'd ask you to quit rubber stamping. My final comment is this, for those of you who are community members of the Budget Committee, I would ask you to please give up your seats if you've been sitting on this board for longer than two terms, as Jim, who's not here, Dean, Betty Jo have. And I would ask that our board not, sorry, lost my spot, renew your seats as you did last year, when our policy clearly states Budget Committee members should hold only two terms of three years. So that's what I have to say, thank you for listening, and I do appreciate your service.
Okay, hang tough, Sarah. Is there any questions, any questions for Sarah? Or any, anybody wants a comment regarding, like the, you said, was it Mark Twain? Correct, correct, okay, thank you, okay. Do we know, what do we know?
Well, that's correct, there's no, the music was reduced at Mark Twain a year ago as a result of, 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 of changes in the Mark Twain staffing level. So, you know, that's, that's the bottom line. And the, the school chose. So, you know, that's, that's the bottom line, and the, the school chose to, to put those resources into other priorities.
Right, which is, is our policy in the district is to let the schools do their own budgets and not blanket, blanket cut things from a board level?
That's been our practice, that's correct. And that's part of their funding formulas that the schools have, while there are some district-wide purchases and expenditures, I should say, that, that are across the top district-wide for things like special education, curriculum, technology, we've increased that recently, health services, nursing services, they're, the schools have the latitude to prioritize their decisions for their schools based upon a variety of needs, which could be related to staffing levels, even facility restrictions, priorities for the school or the community at that point. And much of these, specific to the site-based funding decisions are an, an extension of when we moved into a post-unification period, when, when schools at that time, pre-unification, had the independent authority to do their budgets, and what we heard from the community at that time, and I believe what is still the sentiment today, is that they, the communities generally appreciate that within their independent schools to be able to do that. And that applies directly to our three in-town schools as well, while they're part of the city of Silverton and largely, except for some portions that are in the rural area of those schools, they do operate independently, other than those resources that are given from a general distribution across the district standpoint. It's a very good, it's, there's clearly no perfect answer here when it comes to being certain that the priorities are the same as everyone within the school district, but I think over the years, this, this school district has done a very good job of providing the resources available to adequately fund all of the, the programs as prioritized by, by those schools independently in the school district. I, you know, I'm, I'm fully, I understand Sarah's perspective, and I would love to see music funded at every one of our schools in this district, and I've said that a number of times and will continue to say that. Unfortunately, at a seven point eight to eight billion dollar funding level, that is going to be nearly impossible. And the only other element that I would throw out there for your consideration as a Budget Committee, and you'll hear this again in my superintendent message when I shared it in the next meeting, will be a very direct reference to meeting the independent counseling, even mental health needs of our students in this district. I fully value music education and want to continue to see that become a reality in this school district. But at this point in time, we have un, unmet needs related to counseling services, mental health services in this district, which is a significant concern and continues to be an increasing concern in this district, and they are being unmet. So at what point in time, how do we make some of the priority decisions as a district when we, when we have less than adequate funding to create less than adequate opportunities for us as a school district for essential services such as day-to-day operations for our schools, even general curriculum, and significant needs for the counseling and mental health support for our kids? I'm very concerned about that, and, and I do not hesitate to say, we are less than adequately funded in this school district, and Sarah's testimony is well taken. I'd love to see it.
Thanks.
So if I may ask, Sarah, what would you cut or who would you cut to fund music and art?
Well, I don't necessarily think it's cutting. I think that we're not doing a good job looking for alternative resources to fund either. Why don't we have, we have a grant writer for the district, why is that person not actively seeking grants for all of our schools? Like, we heard tonight, Scotts Mills is seeking their own personal grant, and was it Sancho Hall, that they're seeking their own grants? Why aren't we coming together as a district? Because if we're truly unified, why are we not doing this as a unified district to find these grants so that we can have equitable curriculum and programs to all of our kids, all thirty-five hundred of them? So it's not a matter of cutting, it's a matter of looking outside the box and trying to find another way to succeed for the program. Because like Irv said, we are a unique and coveted district. That's going to start going down, because if you start getting rid of these programs that people want to thrive in, they're going to go look for it elsewhere. I could consider transferring my kid to Sancho, because they have an excellent music program. So it's, you know, and I know that I might be in the minority because I really focus on music, but you know, I, I don't think I am, because when I talk to people out there, there is a lot of people who have this on their minds about the arts, even CTE, you know, so it's not, it's not just me. I think that I'm just the only one that shows up and tells you my opinion, so.
My main, kind of, say something too, Sarah, I appreciate you doing this, I mean, you and I had that conversation about support, and like I say, even the other day, before I was a musician, and my kids are musicians, my wife's a musician, I still am, still act, will be to the day I pass away. I would love to try to work with community members to try to help find alternative fundings, because obviously, we're getting compressed from the state, right? There's only so much money in the hopper to go around. I would love to see us have music at every school, too. I know you're part of Silverton Press Music, you're, you're one of the leadership of there. I think it'd be great, maybe, if we could find some way, we can continue this offline. I'd love to sit down and talk. How can we work with groups like that to try to do more funding? You know, just kind of akin to how the Silverbox Foundation helped, helped you determine the field. So I would love to sit down with you, to vary in your future and see what we can do to work together, saying that right here to you, so I'd love to continue this offline with you. Thanks.
Where, Andy, regarding grants, where grants we apply for and, and when successful, are they, are the highest percentage of those state grants, are they federal grants?
We apply for multiple grants every year. We get turned down on a number of grants. We get accepted for a number of grants. We encourage our principals and our teachers to apply for independent grants. There's some small grants, such as MAPS Credit Union or Selco Grant, things like that, that, again, we have a part-time grant writer, so while we could surely increase that, we also don't want to discourage our teachers and principals and others from writing grants, because many times they're very successful at those small projects and they do a pretty good job. We have had a relative high level of success in, in grant writing over the last few years in millions of dollars, and admittedly, those have been offset largely by some very large seismic grants, but we've also been successful in a number of other areas related to grants. The, the reality with grants is while we'll continue to put resources into it, is that many times Silverton and Silverfall School District is not always eligible for those grants. We have generally a, a low poverty rate, and poverty is, is many times a very significant variable. We have quite a few resources in our community, and many times you have to refer to deficiencies of resources, things like, you know, we have health services, hospital, we have supermarket stores, commercial downtown, quite a few other supports that some communities don't have, and frankly, those communities generally have a higher, a higher frequency of grant, sort of, awarding, simply because of some of those demographics. Sarah's point is well taken. We'll continue to access those grants, and however, I will say that our, our grant writer hasn't had the kind of success related to, to grant awarding as we had hoped, simply because, for a variety of reasons, I should say, related to our eligibility for some of those grants. We'll continue to knock on those doors, and they're out there. But to be able to adequately rely upon grants is something that can be a real challenge, because many times grant awards also have a sustainability requirement, let's say it lasts for a year or two years, and then you're expected to sustain that within your general fund afterwards. And so, while all of those can be addressed independently, the, the other reality of this is that we have so many unknowns about funding and education as it is. And while I'd love to be able to say, let's plan on having access to millions of dollars of grants every year, that's not the reality. We may be able to get them on occasion, we may get a surge, we may qualify for a few, and then that grant is gone two years later, you have to find replacement dollars for that. So I fully value every grant that we can get, and we will, we will be fully accountable for that. But to be able to reliably, rely upon, I should say, grants is, is, is difficult at times, especially for schools who, who rely upon, literally, in this case, tens of millions of dollars for daily operation, or for operation through a fiscal year.
Andy, is there a priority list for what types of grants we're looking for?
We, we rely upon our strategic plan, which has been crafted by the community and by the school board over years to help identify what some of those are. Last year, with the transition of the schools, we prioritized facility grants simply because there was a higher need at, at that point, and we, we did the facility moves last year on a pretty tight dime, and so we looked for every dollar that we could related to grants. This year, with the uncertainty with, let's say, physical education and curriculum and those related to reading and math supports, we're looking for those, we're looking for music grants. We are tapping into all sorts of options and opportunities with, with grants. So a priority list, sure, based upon the strategic plan first and foremost. Second to that, based upon the individual needs that we're experiencing at that time where that schools have.
Is grant writing a problem in terms of capacity for time for a grant writer who's obviously employed by the district? Are they at capacity? In terms of, let's just say we wanted to try to go after, say, music grants, you know, could they, could it value from maybe some volunteer assistance on that grant writing? Who maybe somebody in the community says, hey, I'm, I'm willing to kind of help work pro bono to help write, write these grants? If they have grant writing history?
Yeah, I think there's some, there's some opportunity for that, and, and our, our grant writer's pretty connected to the community, and I believe has tapped into people and asked for support and assistance. I believe he's working on a couple of grants right now, which actually tap into Silverton Together, and is looking for partnership grants, Silverton Area Community Aid to work with those other agencies and tap into their grant writing resources as well. Many times you have more success when you can work in a partnership as compared to independently. And so we're, we're making those efforts, too. But sure, Aaron, I mean, he.
Spirit, I think people can volunteer to help foster these grants.
Is, is there any issue with just the capacity of time in the day and all the things that have to be fit into a school day?
Yes. Bottom line, yes. When you talk about impending, impending required physical education time, mandate specific, you know, there's, there's realistically, principals are saying, if we have required PE, if we have the addition of other requirements, priorities for the school district, if we add, let's say, the addition of music, where will we put it and what will be, what will have fewer minutes if we were to add these other requirements? So there comes a point in time, your kids are in school, right? Six, six and a half, seven hours a day, and that's it. So short of extending the school day or the school year, you heard plenty of emphasis tonight specific to, to reading and math, and admittedly, that's, that's what drives our, our world many times, and all of the other subjects support that. However, you know, it, would it be reasonable for a Robert Frost school, who's made clearly a priority with ninety minutes of, of reading support every day, be able to provide some other curriculum, whether it be music or any other curriculum, for a, a number of minutes a week at, at the expense of reading? Maybe, but that would have to occur, and that very difficult decision would have to be made. Thank you.
So Andy, I would assume that if Sarah or anybody else in the community had knowledge of some grants they want to pass on, you'd pass them on?
We put them right directly. Jennifer Hannan actually oversees the grant writer position, and so Jennifer Hannan would be the one.
Okay.
Yeah. Any suggestions? We'll go ahead with you here.
And then Sarah was commenting about the central-based budget. From all the principals I've talked to, and obviously not all of them, they all seem to really prefer site-based, it seems, so.
Yeah, we've actually inched more towards centralized budgeting over the course of the last six or seven years, and I think we have still some, some work to do in that arena. But generally speaking, you're right, of, of the principals, the teachers, and I believe the communities appreciate their ability to make some site-specific decisions like this. And especially at our rural schools, which have peaks and valleys in enrollment. Silvercrest is a perfect example. Sometimes, I mean, when you drop twenty kids, thirty kids over a two, three, four-year period, it makes it very challenging to be able to offer some consistent practices or services that could be augmented by the district, but at the same time, would that necessarily be fair to another school that had sustained enrollment? You know, there's lots, this, this can be quite an interesting dynamic when you begin talking about what's within the district control and what's whatnot. The place that I've seen more centralized budgeting work very well are for school districts that have very similar schools, very similar size schools, very similar makeup of schools, and very similar proximity, let's say, North Marion or Cascade, Elam Salem Kaiser for that matter, which has many, many very similar sizes and similar makeup of schools. In our district, that's not the case, when you have eighty students in one school, eight schools and three hundred and twenty-five in another.
Well, you have that much diversity, you have different needs.
It's challenging, it's very challenging.
It's probably trade-offs, too. You could have fifteen things you've gained by centralized funding, but you may lose fifteen great things, you know, on the other back end, so it's probably a trade-off, you know? You could probably say, oh, we're carrying, we're going to centralized funding, this is, hey, this is going to work better, but in the end, it might, you get into it and go, oh, it was a bad decision, so.
I say, you know, we put the principals in those positions, so best we kind of listen to them, so.
Okay, anyone else like to address the committee? Going once, going twice? Thank you. Dates for our next meeting?
That meeting is set for May eleventh.
May eleventh, right, okay.
You'll hear your department budgets that night, you'll receive the budget message from me. I'll have an additional opportunity for audience with visitors that evening, and of course, additional dialogue, and if you believe that you need more meetings after that, you can surely set those up as a Budget Committee.
Same time, seven P M?
Yes, then right here.
Okay, any other business? Anything else that anybody wants to bring up? This would be your opportunity. Okay, see nothing, we'll adjourn the meeting, and we'll see you on the eleventh.